Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Benson.
Here.
Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Commissioner Freitas. Commissioner Mayer.
Here. Commissioner Kraft will lead us in a salute to the flag. We will move to approval of our November regular meeting minutes.
I will move to approve.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to oral communications. This is for anyone who has something they would like to speak on that is not on the agenda this evening. All right, we will close oral communications and move to public hearings new and the appeal of the Carrington Company lotline adjustment coastal development permit and associated lotline adjustment.
Senior Planner Castellano will be presenting tonight remotely via Zoom because she's a bit sick right now.
And Commissioners and Chair, I will need to recuse myself from this. I work for Pop and Barclay and have profit interests and we are joining the property in question, so I will be out there.
Thank you, we'll make sure to let you know.
Great, thank you.
Caitlin, we can see your notes, can you?
Thank you. How about now?
You're good.
Okay, great. Let me know when I can begin.
We're ready when you are.
Okay, great, thank you, good evening. As Kristin said, Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner assigned to this project, I'm sorry I could not be there in person tonight, to present the appeal of the Carrington Company Lotline Adjustment Coastal Development Permit and the Associated Lotline Adjustment at 4775 Broadway, which proposes to adjust the lotlines of three parcels resulting in three parcels. No new parcels are being created as a result of this lotline adjustment. Here's a bird's eye view showing the property in the context of the city limits. The property is located on, excuse me, sorry. The site is located in the southernmost portion of the city. Zooming in, the property is located on the east side of Broadway and Highway 101, north of Herrick Avenue. A large majority of the property is located in the coastal zone. The blue line that you see there represents the inland extent of the coastal zone and you can see a small portion at the northeast corner is not in the coastal zone. The property abuts the county's jurisdiction on several sides as seen in yellow. The property is comprised of three legal parcels, as shown by the blue broken lines and the red broken lines show the proposed reconfigured parcels resulting in three parcels. So per the applicant, parcel one is developed with existing buildings used as a daycare and farm for individuals needing assistance with daily tasks. This is the Carolson Center Farm and Garden daycare for adults with disabilities operated by Butler Valley, a nonprofit agency. And the remaining portion of parcel one is separately leased and used for commercial grazing operations. Parcel two and three are undeveloped and the lowland portions of each parcel are also included in the leased commercial grazing operation. And the upland portions of parcels two and three are open space. This will make more sense when I show the aerial image with contours on the next slide. The purpose of the lotline adjustment is to convey proposed resultant parcel A to Butler Valley, retain parcel B and continue leasing it for grazing and potentially sell resultant parcel C in the future. For the applicant, no development is proposed on any of the resultant parcels at this time. So the approximately 85 acre property has three distinct areas. One, the small race terrace circled in yellow at the northwestern corner of the property used by Butler Valley, where the farm-related structures are concentrated. Two, the large lowland area of grazed wetlands. And three, the large upper terrace area along the eastern side of the property. Here are the current lotlines in blue, or light blue. And then the LLA would move the existing lotlines to roughly separate these three areas, the lowland, upland, and the northeast corner where Butler Valley is, into their own parcels. So because the project site is located in the coastal zone, the proposed lotline adjustment constitutes non-exempt development, so it requires a coastal development permit, a CDP. The CDP is appealable to the California Coastal Commission and the CDP must conform to the policies of the Certified Local Coastal Program. And based upon findings and analysis included in the Director's Staff Report, the Director approved the CDP subject to three conditions of approval, two of which are intended to prevent impacts to coastal resources, including limiting future development in environmentally sensitive habitat areas on resultant parcel B and ensuring resultant parcel B maintains legal access over resultant parcel A so it can continue being used for grazing since it would not have its own access to a public road after the lotline adjustment. The third condition, condition one, alerts the applicant to the need for the lotline adjustment to be approved prior to the coastal development permit, CDP, becoming effective, which also means if the lotline adjustment is approved tonight, it can't be recorded until the CDP is effective. The full text of the conditions of approval as well as analysis on conformance with the certified policies of the local coastal program can be found in the Director's Staff Report and Resolution and Attachment Four. However, I do want to provide a little context and more information on why a deed restriction is included for resultant parcel B. Under existing conditions, existing parcel one includes both the majority of the grazed lowlands and the upland cluster of buildings at the northwestern corner of the property which are being used by Butler Valley. The lotline adjustment would carve off the upland portion of existing parcel one in the northwestern corner, turning it into resultant parcel A, leaving resultant parcel B without any clear uplands. No wetland delineation has been submitted as part of this application, but the National Wetlands Inventory mapping shows most of resultant parcel B is wetland, so it cannot be assumed that resultant parcel B would have an upland footprint that could be accessed and developed without filling wetlands. The deed restriction is needed on resultant parcel B to ensure the lotline adjustment is not creating a new need or legal right to fill wetlands as a result of creating a parcel that doesn't have a clear developable upland footprint. Because the lotline adjustment is creating this potential local coastal program consistency issue on resultant parcel B, a condition is necessary to ensure the lotline adjustment doesn't result in new wetland fill that could have been avoided by not doing the lotline adjustment. In contrast, resultant parcel C, which covers the eastern terrace, is larger than existing parcel two and that it replaces, excuse me. So you can see here that parcel two, you know, is comprised of most of the upland already and then the proposed resultant parcel C would just encompass all of the upland. So the slotline adjustment isn't creating any new issues or inconsistencies with the developability of the eastern terrace that must be addressed by a condition of approval. So the Director approved the CDP at a Director's Hearing on November 13th. Eighteen community members were present and nine spoke. Nine appeals have been received regarding the city's noticing procedure and use of Zoom only to conduct the Director's Hearing and that the lotline adjustment was not in accordance with the Certified Local Coastal Program. Your Planning Commission Staff Report provides a general rundown of the appellate's contentions and responses. Attachment three includes the full text of all the appeals and attachment four includes the full text of the comment letters received prior to the Director's Decision. City staff still believe the proposed project as conditioned by the Director approval is consistent with the city's Certified Local Coastal Program. As a result, the Director's Decision on the coastal development permit should be sustained. Pursuant to the required findings to approve a lotline adjustment in the city's subdivision regulations in Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 154, the project meets the definition of a lotline adjustment in that a greater number of parcels than originally existed are not created. The project proposes to adjust the lotlines of three parcels resulting in three parcels. This is not a subdivision, so no new parcels are being created. And there are no violations of the Eureka Municipal Code resulting from the lotline adjustment as the resultant parcels meet the minimum parcel size and other development standards of the code. Also, as previously stated, the lotline adjustment has been conditioned to ensure the associated coastal development permit is approved and effective prior to the lotline adjustment being recorded. And all final conditions of approval of the lotline adjustment coastal development permit must be followed. As a result, the lotline adjustment can be found consistent with the city's subdivision regulations and the State Subdivision Map Act and can be approved. So for the reasons presented today and included in the staff reports, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions finding the project is exempt from SEQA, sustaining the Director's conditional approval of the coastal development permit, CDP 23-001, and approving the lotline adjustment, LLA-23-001. A suggested motion has been prepared on the next slide, but I will stop screen sharing to allow for discussion. Myself, as well as the applicant agent, or applicant's agent, excuse me, are available for questions. I'll stop screen sharing, thank you.
Thank you for your report. I will bring it back to Commissioners for questions for staff.
Thanks Planner Castellano. One of my questions was, the map seems to reference the creation documents for the three existing parcels. Do we have a clear understanding of their legality with respect to the Subdivision Map Act and how they were each created? It looks like some deeds from the Division of Highways may have been involved, but I'd like to know what our analysis showed.
Yeah, so that, we, yeah, we did, we went through the legal lot determination process with the city surveyor as well as our city attorney and as well as applicant's agent, who is also a licensed surveyor. And if he wants, the applicant's agent wants to come up and provide a little bit more information on all the deeds. There were a ton of deeds that needed to be sifted through and the title report and I don't have the specific code section. Yeah, there was a lot of, it was a weird one, but we did do a lot of research and with our city surveyor to determine that there were three legal parcels and I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on that, so I would have to defer to Kristin or to Mike O'Hearn, who is the licensed surveyor on this project.
Director, would you say that the action on this, given that it's a lotline adjustment that's recognizing the parcels to begin with, that it is, are we doing a certificate of compliance in concert with the lotline adjustment?
Yes, it will be recorded as a certificate of compliance and lotline adjustment.
Action appealable by the Coastal Commission in terms of our determination, like how would they show?
No, they can only appeal the coastal development permit, but they, if they disagreed with our determination, then they wouldn't approve a coastal development permit for a lotline adjustment. So they will check it when, if they, if and when they receive an appeal.
So another question I had was with regard to tribal consultation. So it references in the staff report that the tribes were engaged during the review process, but that none had provided any comments, but then in the hearing, it sounds like Adam Cantor from the Wiat tribe or Bear River appeared. So we hadn't heard anything prior to the zoning hearing from the tribes, is that right?
Correct, we sent out our typical referral and we heard back from the Tipo that there was no concerns at this time. That's not to say that if development was proposed that they would come out with some concerns, but yes, when the Director of Natural Resources, Adam Cantor, presented at the hearing, that was the first that we had heard about this.
And I followed up with Adam and now he's on our referral list as well, in addition to the Tipos. But we've never, you know, we keep an Excel spreadsheet of all the contacts we send our referrals to and Ted Hernandez has been our contact for the Wiat.
Right, and it's customary that we would refer a project, even if there's no AB 52 component, we would refer it to the tribes?
The city standard is for discretionary permits with public hearings, we refer out, we always refer it to the tribes.
And anything in the coastal zone, including building permits with ground disturbance, would be referred to them as well.
Okay, and then I guess, I did have questions about some of the procedural things. I guess this would be a question for the Director, is this a de novo hearing or is it a hearing on the merits of the approval?
It's a de novo hearing. So you have the right to, you know, sustain or deny or adopt your own conditions of approval, whichever.
So some of the appellate's reference, it looks like sections of the code with respect to the requirements for notice and in particular identifying the 300-foot owner and resident requirement, and I'm just reading it here and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a 10-day requirement ahead of the hearing date and that the notice sign be posted on the project site. So are those all three requisite for any matter that goes before the zoning administrator?
Caitlin, do you want to take it or do you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, for, the Director's Hearing didn't need to follow the Brown Act because it's not a group taking action, but we did do a dual noticed hearing. So our, we do have an Excel spreadsheet. Our Senior Administrative Assistant, or I'm sorry, Analyst, Administrative Analyst does do a, certifies that she prepared the postcards and mailed them out to everyone. I was actually out of town when the site got posted, but a colleague of mine posted it and took a picture. It was posted, the original hearing notice was posted on the fence kind of south of the driveway, which was an interesting spot. So we, and then of course it was on the website and then it was also at City Hall. Once the postcards go in the mail, you know, we have no control over what the mail post office does. But, and then also because it's a Director's Hearing, we could choose whether it would be in person or Zoom and so we just, we had been doing Zoom and chose Zoom. But now for this hearing, we did the dual noticing again and then I put three public hearing notice signs up just to make sure, covering all the bases. And we sent out the postcards and then also letters to all of the appellate's, just appellate's.
Appellants.
Just to make sure everyone got it, and I'm not sure if that answered your question, I'm sorry.
It's, in Article 29 of our Coastal Zoning Code, it explains how we're supposed to notice and we followed those regulations.
Was I right in summarizing it, that it's, you know, there's the occupants and owners and there's the 10 calendar day ahead of the hearing and also the posting at the site?
Correct.
Are all required?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess, I thought I would just bring this up because I think we have heard in the appeal, that's appeals that have been filed, concern about the lack of procedural requirements being met. But if this is a de novo hearing and we believe we've, any kind of mistake that may or may not have been made ahead of the zoning administrator action, if it's been remedied prior to tonight, that kind of makes that a moot point, is that correct?
Correct, now we've re-noticed and we're doing another hearing on the same project, so we're basically starting over.
Okay, I just thought that might help focus the discussion on some of the other items, so I think I'll stop there for now.
Thank you, I did have just a quick follow-up in regards to the tribe's feedback during that meeting. So he didn't feel like he needed to put anything in writing for the commission? And was there something that they shared at that time that is important for us to know? It wasn't just listed, it just, they made some comments during the original hearing. Yeah, we just got the verbal comment during the hearing from Adam Cantor and it was about, if I'm remembering correctly, the importance of the habitat of the terrace, that transitional zone between the grazed wetlands and upper terrace. Is that what you remember, recall, Caitlin?
Yep, correct.
Thank you. Can I also just clarify that currently parcel two is developable, could be developed, yes?
Correct, parcel two and parcel three both have upland and they could be developed with a coastal development permit at this time.
Without doing the lotline adjustment.
Correct, I mean, they would need an easement over parcel two to get to parcel three, but yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. They're currently able to be developed with agricultural related uses and after the lotline adjustment, it's the same. Correct, so if they wanted to develop further, there are other hoops to jump through and you would have to change then the use. Yes, the lotline adjustment potentially allows them to separately, better, more easily separately sell, you know, the grazed lowlands from the upper terrace, but it doesn't affect future entitlements that they're going to need to do anything. In either case, before or after the lotline adjustment to do any develop, you know, if the concern was residential subdivision on the upper terrace, to do that in either case would require additional subdivision and coastal development permit and LCP amendment to change the zoning and land use to residential from ag. So this doesn't change all the next, like the next 10 steps that would need to be taken to get to a point where you could do a residential subdivision. Thank you, that was my understanding too, I just wanted to clarify that.
Does it ease those future 10 steps to change?
No, it allows them to sell the upper terrace by itself without having to attach lowlands to it. But either way, to do a residential subdivision, you'd have to come back in to subdivide further. Like the lotline adjustment doesn't create any new parcels, it's not getting you any closer to a residential subdivision, it's not changing the zoning.
So in summary, the purpose behind the lotline adjustment is to be able to sell the upland parcel? And is that stated by the applicant?
The applicant is focused on conveying the Butler Valley operation to Butler Valley. And then at the, we can always, you're welcome to ask the applicant, but at the Director Hearing, they also mentioned that creating the, you know, carving the lowland grazed area off by itself also would allow them to sell that for wetland mitigation or restoration in the future.
So I heard in the staff report that the parcel B, that lowland or wetland parcel, that this, I heard the word ensures that there would be no impact or ladder development. Is that entirely true or does it just disincentivize or make more difficult the development of what would become parcel B?
Yeah, it only allows development consistent with the grazed wetland policy as the LCP, so it would be limited, very limited agricultural operations and structures.
So they'd have to record some sort of deed restriction concurrent with recording the lotline adjustment that would restrict future use of parcel B?
Yeah, so you couldn't fill in a bunch of wetland to build agriculture housing or to build a new road.
Understood. I'm just trying to wrap my head around why separating the habitats between upland and lowland. Does this action avoid SEQA for future development in any way?
Not at all. Future act, any future action. Yeah, even ag development would need a coastal development permit, which is a discretionary city action that would require SEQA review.
And there's no exemptions, like you couldn't use the infill exemption here because that is not, it doesn't cover ag zoning.
I guess I just want to follow up. To our knowledge, there's been no information or discussion with the applicant or their agent concerning contemplated future development proposals at this juncture for any of the resulting parcels?
We know that the applicant, back in 2012, themselves attempted a residential subdivision on the upper terrace area and then got pretty far. It got, the LCP amendment to rezone it, I believe got submitted to the Coastal Commission.
Cleared the council.
Yeah.
So it's reasonable for the neighborhood to have some concern about that given there's been a precedent of interests in that area before. Okay, and I guess I would just ask, maybe this is for the Director, you know, SEQA, you know, does ask that agencies look at the whole of the project and given the precedent, do we believe that this is piecemealing under SEQA? Is there any potential for that?
No, if this was a subdivision, then I would be concerned about that.
And then you couldn't qualify for exemption if it was a subdivision either.
Actually, yeah, I think there's an LCP policy even that you can't subdivide ag land, so.
I guess one other question I forgot to ask is, do we have an obligation under our subdivision regulations that the parcels coming out of a lotline adjustment all be developable?
No, that's in our inland code, our inland, there's a section of 155 of our inland code that states that.
So a parcel that has very limited to none, no development potential could result as long as it's not a greater number of parcels than what you started with?
It has to be consistent with the local coastal program though. And so if you have an all wetlands parcel that, and you're creating a right to build a house on it, then it's inconsistent. That's why we had to impose the deed restriction because the LLA carved off the cluster of buildings where you would cluster future development for the lowland area.
Right, but couldn't it be argued by carving that off, you're lowering the development potential of one of the parcels, not increasing it? Because instead of there being a distribution of developable acreage amongst all three, there's going to be a lot on one and none on another?
In talking about it with the Coastal Commission, they were concerned because typically, you know, when you have these ag grazed lands, you cluster all of your ag buildings together to minimize the amount of wetland fill from ag-related structures. And so they were concerned that if Butler Valley's operation was no longer on the same parcel as the grazed wetlands, that you were then creating a right to fill wetlands for, because now you have, let's say it gets sold separately, resultant parcel B, it's an all wetland ag parcel, somebody wants to do a separate ag operation on it, they could argue they have a right to build a farmhouse or whatever to take care of their ag operation on their parcel.
So have we done this in the past? I mean, from my experience with the county, we would do a conveyance of certain development rights from the owner to the city or county. Is it something like, along those lines?
Right, they, the applicant's agent actually sent us an example from the county of that exact thing.
So just to be clear for folks watching, I guess that would be giving away certain rights to the city in, for the near term until certain other requirements are met?
We took out the part about.
No reconveyance?
Yeah, no reconveyance.
All right, thanks.
And just to clarify too, because it could be confusing for people paying, watching, that we do have two codes because we haven't yet certified the coastal code, which it looks like some of the letters were referring to the draft, which has not yet been certified, just to clarify that for them.
Yes.
They were referring to an incorrect code, but a future coming code.
Yeah, they were referring to the. Yeah, they were referring to the draft land use plan update. That's not yet certified.
Okay, it looks like we are done with questions here. So we are going to open it up to public comment or hearing and just for some clarification, we'd just like for you to state your name. You will have three minutes and one time per person at the podium. And this is not a question and answer. It is just comment to the commission. So please don't expect for questions to be answered at this time. So if the applicant would like to speak first, we generally offer that courtesy. If not, no problem.
Thank you. My name is Mike O'Hearn. I'm a land surveyor. I'm the agent for the Carrington Company on this project. My office prepared the mapping and the research for the legal parcels. The staff has done a great job of describing this project. There's really not a lot that I need to say. But just to maybe reiterate a couple of points. One is that there are three legal parcels right now that could be sold to three different people. And after the lotline adjustment, there will be three legal parcels that could be sold to three different people. So there is no increase in the number of parcels that can be sold and no increase in the development potential. The motivation for the Carrington Company is to sell, or not to sell, to give parcel A to the Butler Valley Foundation or Butler Valley, Inc. Mr. Carrington has a personal interest in that facility. He wants to give it to them at no charge. I think that's something that should be certainly favored and not made more difficult. So that's the purpose of this lotline adjustment is to create that parcel for conveyance to Butler Valley, Inc. But since there are three parcels and we needed to involve at least two of them for a lotline adjustment, it just made sense to make the lines fit the use of the ground and the topographic features of the ground. So as staff has indicated, parcel A is the upland that's developed with the farmhouse, which will be donated to Butler Valley, Inc. Parcel B is grazed wetland parcel. There will be a conveyance of development rights, deed restrictions, so that there is no possibility of developing that for residential purposes. It's strictly for ag. And then there is parcel C, which is the upland parcel that's near the Pine Hill area. And so right now parcel C includes most of the upper flat there and it could be sold in its present configuration to anybody who wanted to buy it. And then there's another portion, which is the current parcel, which is identified as three, which owns a parcel, a portion of that upland area. So really the upland area could be sold to two different parties right now, who could each attempt to two different developments. After the lotline adjustment, it will be one parcel that could be conveyed to one party for development or for some other purpose, maybe a park, maybe open space. It will be for sale, you know, undoubtedly at some point it will be for sale and whoever can buy it, could buy it. Let's see, Commissioner Lazar had a question about legal parcels. We went back and found the creation documents for three parcels. The reference to the state parcels are just reflecting the fact that Highway 101 has been widened and so portions were conveyed to the state. And I'm available to answer any questions either before or after other people speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Hill. I submitted an appeal and with that letter, and I'll submit on my letter because I think that all the points in there are completely valid and I'll try to keep this under three minutes as much as possible. I do want to just speak to very briefly some of the comments that were made while you guys were discussing these things. It was mentioned here that it doesn't change the next steps in the process for developing this area. But it's the first step in changing that, in that process. I also would like to just reiterate, the precedent has already been set. When I purchased my home in 2015, I received a disclosure of a possibility that that, that that construction of that residential area had already been proposed and shut down. So that precedent has been set. Now, the logistics that the staff report talks about is like the logistics of breaking it off and having it. Why does it need to be logistical? I completely support the Carrington Companies want to convey resultant parcel A to the Sun Foundation, Butler Valley. I think that's great. I think they should do that. But why do they need to change the other ones? If it only takes two parcels to do that lotline adjustment, why do we have to change the third one? And the answer is in the report. It's because they're going to sell and develop it. Potentially, that's the process. And like we talked about, the precedent has been set for it. In regards to the comments made by the Carrington Company applicant agent, when we're talking about three to three parcels, they can still do the lotline adjustment for the resultant parcel A and still go from three parcels to three parcels without changing the other resultant parcel C. The other side, the other thing I want to reiterate too is that with the, sorry, with the proposal, they also included that wetland delineation that they had done in 2012. Over a decade old where they're trying to determine what is wetland, what isn't wetland. There's no research, there's no studies, there's no indication of where that wetland is now and God knows, things change all the time. I again will just reiterate, if there's a revision to this lotline adjustment that simply conveys resultant parcel A and doesn't change the rest, I don't think I would be in opposition, by 100% opposition of trying to section off the upper terrace because it is disingenuous to say that they're not planning on developing it when they already have tried to and failed because of the coastal commission. With the last 20 seconds, I do want to say that there, you know, some of my neighbors are going to get up here and speak about this stuff and I concur with the points that they also are going to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Hello, I'm Dr. Cynthia Ledoux Blum. The city of Eureka, under the leadership of Supervisor Arroyo, Major Burgele, City Manager Slattery, Planning Commissioner Mayor, and the Development Director Kenyon is attempting to grant the Carrington Corporation under CDP 23003 and Lot Line Adjustment 23-001, a categorical exemption under SEQA, Sections 1530 and 1533. The city of Eureka is attempting to use this to bypass the SEQA process. The coastal development permit and the proposed lotline adjustment are not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Applicant of the categorical exemption under SEQA by the city of Eureka for Carrington Company project is inappropriate use of the exemption and illegal as it violates SEQA. Why is the categorical exemption for the CDP and the LLA not exempt from SEQA? First, under SEQA, the current coastal development permit and the lotline adjustment are considered a project that has been part of a whole action and these are languages under SEQA of the property which has been questioned under development since 2012. The project, and this is SEQA language specific, the project will cause a direct physical change in the environment or cause a reasonably foreseen indirect physical change in the environment which triggers SEQA. The Director of Development Services staff report dated November 13th in Tables 1 and Figures 2 and 3 demonstrate that the lotline adjustment has direct impacts on the environment by removing 4.4 acres from the large lowland area of grazed wetland and adding it to the large upper terrace area along the eastern side of the property. This action alone causes a direct change in the environment, thus triggers SEQA. This approval of the coastal development permit and the lotline adjustment cause a reasonably foreseen indirect physical change in the environment which caused, which triggers SEQA. Second, under SEQA, a categorical exemption generally will not apply, one, if there is a reasonable possible of significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. Two, significant cumulative impacts from projects in the same type will result and a project will have impacts for uniquely sensitive environment. This area, by your own report, is part of a larger project that may be developed and is on sensitive habitat. This permit and adjustment will cause a direct and direct change to the environment and cause a reasonably unforeseen indirect physical change. This project is located in a particularly sensitive area and this coastal permit and the proposed lotline adjustment are not exempt from the California Quality, Environmental Quality Act. Application of a categorical exempt under SEQA for, by the city for the Carrington Corporation is inappropriate and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ken Canifa. I live at 5036 View Lane, bordering the proposed Section C. I agree with Cynthia and Ryan. I fully support the split of parcel A for the Carroll-Sun lotline adjustment portion. I don't agree with B and C. The city of Eureka Coastal Land Use Plan Draft 2023 Coastal Environmental Subheading states, preserve and enhance and beautify open space, forest, coastal, agricultural, and habitat resources within and surrounding our city. The coastal development permit does not preserve and enhance open space, forest, coastal, agricultural, and certainly not habitat resources. I've lived at this property and I've worked beside this property for over 45 years. I witnessed more wildlife now than in the past. I don't, the report from the 12 years ago or 2012 didn't mention anything about the active osprey nest. This year there was one. That's a pretty big deal. And when the city put the pipeline under Pine Hill that went through this parcel, they dug a ditch and they had to stop work because there was a red-tailed hawk nest and they had to wait. And that's still there. I also noticed that in the report, the city stated the tribes had no concerns, although we did hear the person speak, which was talked about earlier. The, this lotline adjustment is the first step in development. When I bought my house, I bought it because of the nice view and nice area. Nice, open. If they split this up, they're going to develop it. That's not going to be the case. I live on View Lane. I purchased my house because of the view. If this lotline adjustment happens on parcel C, it's the first step to high density housing and there won't be a view from View Lane. My property values will be less. In summary, this project does not conform with the policies of the local coastal program. This project is not categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because the coastal development permit and lotline adjustment are part of a whole action that the city has known about for quite a while and is located in a highly sensitive area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Blum. I live at 2084 Sunset. First thing I want to say is I feel really well represented. Thank you for all the great questions from the council members and from you. It was a lot of knowledge there. So thank you. Very concerned. We moved into the property at 2084, three years ago. And we asked about future development and we were told there had been a development proposed in the, in the past and that it was protected property. It wouldn't be built on. We believe that. In review of the city plan, it clearly states the city wants to build up the downtown area and protect the open areas. And I think it's not within the city's plan to develop this property. And like the other neighbors said, the lotline adjustment is just the first step in development. And I think one of the more important things that hasn't been talked about tonight, it might have been approached a little bit by Mr. Deloche, is that the habitat is sensitive, not just because it's a wetland, because it is a transitional area. It's both tidal wetlands, freshwater wetlands, and an upland. And those three environments together is what makes it seriously sensitive habitat. It's wildlife corridor. And as all the other neighbors around us know, it's full of life. We have everything from little fur bears all the way up to black bear. And although I haven't seen a mountain lion, I've been told there's a few. But we have black bears in that canyon and to develop that upland would be tragic, especially when you consider, it's the first thing people see when they get to Eureka. Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised on the Zoom there. If anybody wants to speak from Zoom, please raise your hand. Or unmute yourself. Oh, we have another.
My name is Nina Richland. I live on 5263 Vance Street. I'm across from the school. I agree with everything everyone's been saying. This is the first step. It's already extremely congested. I can't imagine how many more homes they would put up in there to put in front of school. We're sitting there forever and it's the safety for the kids. So, and it does only go to third grade there. So that's another issue nobody talked about was more impact of cars. So, and I'd hate to lose the wetlands myself, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in attendance like to have their opportunity? I don't see any hands raised on Zoom either. Nope, okay. Going once, going twice. All right, well, we'll close the public hearing and I will bring it back to my fellow commissioners for a call for a motion and then a discussion.
Senior Planner Castellano, can you bring back up the motion? For the purposes of discussion, I will make the motion. I see it now, thank you. I move the Planning Commission find the project is exempt from SEQA, adopt a resolution to sustain the Development Services Director's conditional approval of the Carrington Company Lot Line Adjustment Coastal Development Permit and adopt a resolution to conditionally approve the associated lot line adjustment at 4775 Broadway.
Yeah, I can second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay, well, while I made the motion for the purposes of discussion, I'm having a hard time supporting this lotline, proposed lotline adjustment. I do feel that there's some fragmentation of really valuable habitat. I know Adam Cantor, have worked with him a lot. I am an ecologist myself and I, and I do know the value of transitional brackish, salt brackish wetland. I also am on the Sea Level Rise Institute at Cal Poly Humboldt and know that area to be changing hydrologically fairly, fairly at a rate faster than, than previously predicted. So I certainly have, have a number of concerns and I do see this as a, as a first step and it does to me smack of piecemealing in, in. step and it does to me smack of piecemealing in, in, in a, in a manner. It seems that it will assist the sale of future development and that there's at least a legal change, but it's related to, to the type of habitat. And I think the outcomes might be different in, in SEQA if the wetland and upland habitats were connected. That's just a predictive, but I would have, again, I would have a hard time supporting this fully, but my ears are still open and I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say.
Well, I, I think it'd be helpful if we could pull up the, one of the color coded maps, maybe the one in your PowerPoint. Yeah, anyone that shows the existing parcel configuration and the proposed in a way that we can differentiate.
Maybe figure two.
Okay. So here's what I struggle with and is that when you look at the, right, the, the existing parcels are shown by the blue dotted lines, correct? Yeah.
Sorry.
It's all right. You know, and I, and I had to frankly print out Mr. O'Hearn's map just to try to kind of remind myself of what was going on here. You know, when you look at the, the existing parcel configuration and the proposed outcome, it's not a huge leap, you know? You're, you're consolidating a little bit of upland on parcel C that doesn't exist currently. But as I think the agent correctly pointed out, Mr. O'Hearn, that means that you could have two separate proposals of upland development within the portions that are planned for that. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, RE, that is the land use designation, residential estates?
No, it's ag.
Oh, it is ag. Cause I saw it as ER on some map.
It was listed that way. Yeah, it's a mistake back from when our LUP got updated in the nineties.
Okay. So the entirety of the parcel is ag?
Except for the little piece that's inland.
Yeah.
It has an RE.
Okay. So, you know, in that regard, like having two separate parcels that have upland areas means, you know, more potential chaos and, you know, fragmentation. The land use designation is ultimately what's going to drive what can be done there. And I think that kind of got stopped at the coastal commission level the last time and it's a long process. I mean, I, I just have to say to the folks in the audience, you know, it is not trivial, the number of hurdles that have to be cleared to ever get to a point where development of that parcel would happen in a fashion that was previously contemplated. And it's, and it, it's really frankly outside of the city's control because it would require changes to the land use plan and certification by the coastal commission that didn't prove to be successful the last time. So in terms of what's happening here, what, what's the consequence of this proposal is land gets consolidated, that's the most upland portions. A parcel line gets created that helps convey land that I think everybody is in agreement. You know, the parcel A outcome is a, is a useful one. It will help, you know, donate land or convey it to another party. And then it burdens with development restrictions, the interior portions, the, the middle parcel, parcel B, that's constrained by wetlands, you know? Because without this project, those development rights are fully intact, you know? The wet, wetland restrictions are there, but, but someone could, thinking about that blue parcel for, well, I guess that, that is one good point, that because it has developed area, right, Kristen? They couldn't make a takings argument that the existing parcel that includes the, was the Carroll Sun, right? That because that's already developed, you couldn't argue like, I should be able to develop this because it's already got developed. So, so it's, it is kind of at its current condition, not, not likely to be further developed unless you find upland areas. So I guess I just struggle because to me, it doesn't seem like the outcome is particularly problematic. You know, setting up the ability to convey to future parties doesn't guarantee that development will ever be successful. And it will be a subsequent action that's discretionary in nature and comes back to us and the council and then onto the coastal commission to ever try to pursue that. So I just struggle to see why consolidating the lands in the fashions that are proposed is problematic. And I'd be open to being convinced otherwise, but when you see the two exist, the existing, when you consider the existing configuration and the proposed, if we were, you know, creating a parcel with a lot of development potential that didn't currently exist, I could see that being problematic and, and inappropriate, but I, I just don't really see it. It's really, to me, as stated, it, it creates a more logical configuration. We don't get to drill into the legal lot determination and I'm going to, you know, count on our staff doing that to guarantee that there are three existing parcels. But, you know, I, I, I trust our staff to have made that conclusion and so really we're just, what are the parcel boundaries going to be? That's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
And there, I agree with you. There isn't a breakdown, there is a breakdown of the acreage that's added to the resultant parcel C, which is just increased by just under five acres. So it doesn't seem like a huge, and at the moment, and which was confirmed by the senior planners, is that both of those parcels are currently developable in their state, so.
I think figure six from the staff report shows the zoning map with the coastal boundary. I think to me that, that's helpful to see if we could pull that up, just as a reminder of the current land use allowance.
I didn't have the zoning map in the presentation, but I have it right here.
And the RE, to clarify, just for people that might not know, is residential estate and so that would not be high density.
Correct.
What, what's the minimum parcel size on that or the lot size?
For the inland, for, if they. Yeah, it's inland RE. Caitlin, do you, sorry, Senior Planner Castellano, do you remember what the? Yeah, how many units per?
Oh gosh, it's rural estate.
It's.
Believe it's like a 20 acre minimum, so it's already non-conforming, but it's legal non-conforming.
It's also on the parcel that's being, all the development rights are being conveyed from.
Correct.
Yeah, so that already is kind of got off the table after, if this is to go through. But it really is that, that parcel C and, you know, AG, the, is that the, the zoning currently?
AC.
AC, sorry, I couldn't read it. Yeah, so it allows residential development, but not subdivision beyond what's the parcel size in the current?
Three acres.
And parcel C is?
So the new parcel A to go to Butler Valley would be three acres.
Yeah. Right, right, that's kind of dictating that. But it does, it, there could be subdivision of the resulting parcel C without a coastal amendment or anything like that, just using the, the current zoning.
Correct.
I don't know if that's accurate because I think our LCP has a policy that says you cannot subdivide ag land.
Yeah, as soon as I said that, I said, didn't you just say that you couldn't? Yeah. So right now, without a land use change and a coastal plan amendment, it seems unlikely the subdivision of that land could occur as evidenced by the prior proposal in 2012. And, and that will remain an issue for anyone who seeks to develop it, whether it's the Carringtons or the next buyer or owner. To me, that just seems like that will be a battle for another day if it ever even emerges and I don't, I really don't have a hard time, you know, being at peace with that because I just don't see us facilitating, making something possible that was not possible prior to, you know, it's still the same mountain to climb. That's just the way I'm looking at it, you know?
I agree. Are we wanting to vote on the resolution as it stands? At least to get a?
I, I, here's one thing I will say, you know, I am a little concerned that we don't have evidence, information in the record other than what we hear from our staff about what Mr. Cantor from the tribe was talking about. And this is our bite at the apple as far as this may be the last time that we have a discretionary action if, if they get cold feet on pursuing any future development of that parcel C. So it would be an appropriate time to try to ensure protection of whatever resources from a cultural resource standpoint are significant. And it doesn't seem like there's anything that's been spoken to, but given its landscape position and proximity, you know, it definitely gives me pause that I would think there would be some sensitivity to this parcel, but without anything more specific from the tribes, I don't know what to do about that. But I do feel a little bit of a concern that we may be losing an opportunity to maybe provide some protection or, you know, permission or easements like we did in the case with the corp yard kind of relocation for use and, you know, coordination with the tribes, but.
Do you want to suggest an amendment to it as it stands? Also, he didn't take the time then to enter any comments on record for this meeting and so.
But I don't really feel comfortable. I just wanted to bring it up that it's, this would be maybe an opportunity to do something to kind of ensure certain development, because agricultural development could have an impact on cultural resources and just like the conveyance of the, you know, development for parcel B, we could put some limits on, you know, areas of sensitivity, but if we don't have any knowledge at this time, I don't know what we can do about that.
And any ag development would need a coastal development permit.
Beyond the status quo.
Any ag development, any development out there would need a coastal development permit.
Well, yeah, I, I'm comfortable moving forward. I, I don't know if that helps the neighbors, you know, rest easier, but I, I do think that we're not opening the door to anything that's not open already and it's a hard, it's a, it's a long way to go to, to open up density on, or development, you know, on that property beyond one home, it sounds like.
Right. All right, well, let's do a roll call vote unless there's more discussion at this time or if you want to edit the resolution.
So what I do really support in this is, is I support the, the formation of parcel A to the daycare facility and for, for Butler Valley and I don't want to disincentivize that for the project applicant because I have certain concerns about, about parcels B and C. So I would be much more inclined to support a condition that, that facilitated the lot line adjustment for, for parcel A without necessarily or, and then to the minimum degree changing parcels B and C, but that would, that might be a, a different project. I'm not sure I can.
Our attorney is on Zoom, but I do think that would probably need to be brought back and as a different project, but you, you're welcome to ask him.
And I, you know, normally I, I have a, a deep and abiding respect and normally go with staff recommendations because they're so well informed and my fellow commissioners bring such expertise to the table that I'm often swayed, but this is a situation where I, where while there still are a lot of steps to, to development and any decisions we make tonight either way won't preclude the potential for, for future development, but I'm just not inclined to kick the can down the road when we have the, the responsibility to make hard decisions here.
So I'm not sure where that makes you stand. So should we take a vote on the current motion on the floor? Yes, all right, well, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
No.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you and thank you for your feedback and for you guys being so engaged in this process.
Chair, may I explain the next steps?
Yes, absolutely. I think that'd be helpful.
There's another, now that the planning commission has acted de novo, there's a 10 day appeal period of their actions. They've taken two, they've approved the lot line adjustment under the subdivision map act and the coastal development permit. So either of those can be appealed or both. The coastal development permit appeal, there's no fee for that, appealing that to the city council, whereas there is a fee to appeal the lot line adjustment. And there's no requirement you have to appeal both. You can appeal either or if, if you so desire and you have standing because you participated. And then the city counts, if, if it gets appealed to the city council and they, or if it doesn't get appealed to the city council, after the 10 day appeal period ends, the planning commission's decision becomes effective locally and then gets trans, and then we, the coastal commission then has an appeal period and it's appealable to the coastal commission.
Thanks, lots of opportunity for engagement there. All right, thank you. Uh, we will move to old business, which I'm not seeing any new business, still not seeing any, less than anything's been added. And we'll go to the staff report and communication for the cannabis update. Oh yeah, we need to bring in Commissioner Kraft. The, the commission just has a little bit of feedback about some of the noticing issues and so I'm wondering, is, is, could we maybe back up and just chat about that for a minute or we can do that under other reports and communications after we do the cannabis update?
Attorney Black, did you hear that question?
I did. I'm just wondering, have the, have the people in attendance for that particular item already now left the room?
Yeah. It, it's not so much specific to this one as it is general that, because this has come up in other items a few times and so just for some clarification for commission and I don't think we're suggesting that we would make any actions tonight or recommendations for changes.
I think if your actions are limited to questions for clarification purposes and/or direction to staff to bring an item back or items back for future agenda, I, I think you can do what you suggested.
I would suggest doing it under other reports and communications.
Okay, we'll table it and come back to it and so let's move forward with the cannabis update. Thank you, Attorney Black.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Riley Kowaliewski, senior planner. I'm here tonight to give you guys an update on the cannabis program, so I'll share my screen.
Can, can we turn the volume up anyway? Riley, can you do it at your end or can we do it at this end?
I have these kind of janky headphones. Does that help at all if I hold this thing up?
Not really. It's just a little muffled on your end.
Okay. Does that help at all or? Um, how's my volume now?
Better.
Okay, I just raised my, my voice.
We can see your reading notes, your presentation notes.
That was my next question. I'll switch it up. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I didn't have any notes anywhere in there, so. Yeah, I'm here tonight to give you guys an update, a status report on the City of Eureka's cannabis program and to kind of specifically hone in on retail facilities or cannabis retail license that we offer. And to kind of specifically hone in on retail facilities or cannabis retail license that we offer. Okay, so a brief outline. I'm going to give you a little history of retail cannabis in Eureka. I'll give, give a, a little synopsis of our current license numbers. We'll look at our HBL, our consultants, and look at some aggregated business data, the last report that we had. I'll talk about the inventory of facilities that have been improved through the cannabis program. We'll briefly talk about cannabis events because that's kind of the new, new item that happened as our cannabis ordinance 2.0 just came out recently or not that long ago. And then we'll get some questions going. So jumping into it. A little history of cannabis in Eureka. In 2018, the city held an RFP process and it resulted in 18 applications or proposals. And it was determined by the council at the time that we would just accept all of the proposals and invite those folks to open, or to go through the process and to open a dispensary if they completed the process. And so of the 18 proposals accepted, eight of them actually made it through the process. I don't know if it's similar in other business ventures, but it seems that in, in the cannabis arena, there's a lot of pitfalls. So of, yeah, the 18 proposals accepted, eight of them actually opened. As part of our cannabis ordinance 2.0 or our revision of cannabis ordinance in 2022, the city council voted to remove the cap and allow for retail cannabis facilities to be treated as traditional businesses with competition. Jumping into the current cannabis license numbers. There are currently 65 total active cannabis licenses, you know, ranging from cultivation to distribution, to retail, to testing, to transportation. So of those 65 active, that means they've paid their license fees, 58 are operational. And there's seven in the process of going operational. Cannabis licenses range in type. These are the ones that we have under that 65. There's seven cultivation, 23 distribution, 21 manufacturing, two transportation, and 12 retail. And of the 12 retail facilities, nine are currently open for business and three are in the process of going operational. And here's a quick little map showing in green, those are the operational and the reds are the ones that are getting ready to come online. Looking at some business data from our consultant, HBL. And so it aggregates the business types. So one, one business type that it reports on are referred to as cannabis businesses. So that refers to all of our cannabis, all 65 of them. And for the last report, which was from quarter one of 2022 to quarter one of 2023, we saw an 8% decline in businesses and tax revenue. And just to, to give you an idea, there was a 4.7% decline in all business types for the whole report. So the cannabis industry definitely did fare a little harder or a little worse than most businesses. And I think everyone has kind of heard that or seen that. But anecdotally speaking, just talking, I was given information that's sensitive. But basically I was allowed to report that the cannabis retail businesses did not decline. It wasn't a great increase. I don't know the number, but it did not decline during the same period. But it showed a modest increase. So cannabis retail, in, in my opinion, seems to be doing the best of all of our license types, but still, you know, not making huge bounds. Now we'll talk about our inventory of facilities that have been improved through the cannabis program. And this is because cannabis projects, well, sorry. Cannabis projects are commonly going into locations that were long-term or chronically vacant. And a local commercial real estate agent told me that cannabis businesses are one of only a few business types that actually enjoy the highway one-on-one frontage. A lot of similar businesses that, that aren't cannabis, that go into the same zoning districts traditionally like to stay off of that highway one-on-one frontage. But I think the cannabis folks see it as an advantage for people passing through the area. And also cannabis improvements are on average, you know, more comprehensive and expensive due to security and other, you know, requirements from, from our jurisdiction and from the state. So like I've mentioned before, if a cannabis business goes in and has to make some substantial improvements and then later has to cool out, you know, it's not all lost because on, at the city level, we're left with the improvement to our inventory. And cannabis events are, are newest ordinance that passed six months or so ago. Cannabis ordinance 2.0, we call it, allowed for cannabis events. So in September, Eureka had its first ever cannabis event known as Canafest down at Halverson Park. And it was allowed under a new ordinance and it was deemed a success. And the Canafest folks are looking forward to this next year. Mark your calendar, second weekend in September. And with that, I will open it up for discussion for any questions.
Thanks. That was a nice summation. Looks like Commissioner Benson might have a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Topoluski. That was, that was super informative and I really liked the numbers and the percents. Thanks. I'm just curious with, at Canafest, you said that, that event was a success. What, what made it a success? What are the criteria for an event being successful?
Good question. Yeah, that wasn't necessarily my opinion. It was just the, the folks that put it on, everyone that attended. I just kept hearing over and over that it was a success. And from my opinion, just to see Halverson Park, it's such a beautiful venue, has such natural beauty. And it's a, it's an easy draw for people. And we actually got lucky. Saturday was a little classic coastal Humboldt fog in the afternoon. But Sunday was, you know, people needed sunscreen. It was just maybe one of the best days of the whole year. And the view of the marina when the sun going down and the way that the festival organizers kind of arranged the stage with the bay in the background, it really set off the venue. It was, it was nice to see such a beautiful venue getting utilized. And we look forward to the future, hopefully the event, you know, show some growth. It was a little bit of, you know, not as many attendees as the organizers were hoping for, but definitely exceeded their low, low estimate. So, yeah.
Maybe there isn't a comparable event, but I'm just curious, were there a lot of vendors? And do you have any numbers of vendors or attendees or even just rough estimates?
You know, there was a tremendous amount of vendors. There was somewhere between 350 and 400 booths.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah. And there was, it was everything ranging from, you know, cannabis sales and consumption to food, to a tremendous amount of goods and wares. And then there was, you know, a really cool like southern Humboldt history booth that, you know, you could spend hours in there just going through some of the stories and videos they had. So yeah, there was, there was quite a varied group. But yeah, a lot of vendors, very, very much so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Riley, I'm kind of interested in, to the extent you can share this, what you're seeing in the pipeline either, well, both actually, of new applications coming in and what for. And, you know, from my position within the industry, I have heard of a number of folks paying their license fees, but not being actual operate, actually operating in a lively way, but just trying to hold on. Can you shed any light on kind of those things within the pipeline?
Yeah, yeah. Your first, first question about what's coming down the pipeline here. You know, it's not as bustling as it once was, you know, a couple of years ago. So I think there's definitely some, some caution there. We do have a couple, a couple of retail facilities that are getting close to coming online. But there are folks that are already operating with like a distribution and a non-volatile manufacturing. And they're just trying to add a really small storefront to their facilities to, to hopefully, you know, make a little more profit margin. So not too much coming down the line right now. There's not a lot of applicants. And, and like I was leading to before, something about this industry, I'd say of the applicants we get, maybe 50% actually get to the finish line. So it's kind of sad, you know. There's a lot of folks that, for whatever reason, don't make it. So. But of the ones that are in operation, I think they've shown good resilience, you know, trying to button down the hatches and, and hold on. So. What was the second part of your question?
All right. How much, and, and I realize you won't be able to share details, but how much are you seeing folks paying for the license to hold on to it, but not really operating in a substantial way?
Yeah, right, right. You know, not that much. I think everybody, like I was just talking about, maybe they're really streamlining or setting back on employees and trying to, to make it. But there's only a couple of folks that I've seen that are kind of quoting their place by paying their license. But, you know, as part of our, our updated ordinance, we really did, we gutted out all of our fees and streamlined our permit types. So we're, we're trying to work with folks and hopefully it gives them a little more time to, to make it. But no, I'm not, I'm not seeing too many people that are just kind of paying their license and holding on while not working.
Okay. Glad to hear it. I, and I do, I, I've said this to Riley Topoluski, but for the wider group, the city's work in streamlining and addressing the fees is substantial. It was, you know, I was watching that as it happened and it, it makes a really a difference for operators. My last question, Riley. So we're about two years into the kind of no cap on retail. And I personally like that. What are you seeing and hearing, both good and bad, from, you know, not having the RFP, just letting the market decide once people clear the regulatory hurdles?
Yeah, I don't, you know, I think we were all kind of bracing for kind of a secondary rush of applicants. But we still haven't even hit, you know, we're kind of halfway to the original 18 that we were capped at. So, you know, I'm not seeing, I think everyone would love to, you know, kind of be the only show in town. That'd be great, but I don't, I don't see, you know, a tremendous, tremendous amount of applicants coming in. There was a little, you know, buzz when we talked about removing the cap, but, and we did see a little rush. But it was only probably four or five new applicants for the retail. Excuse me. And of those, once again, you know, half of them end up kind of fizzling out, so.
Okay. Well, as one of the people that asked for this presentation, I really appreciate the effort you put in and the information. Thanks a lot.
Oh, for sure.
Commissioner Kraft, based on my spreadsheet that I keep for payments and so on, there's right now about four that aren't open and are still maintaining that license from 2017. Yeah, there's just a few of them left.
Thanks, Riley. She's the brains of the operation.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate that. Yeah, please, Commissioner Benson.
Riley, just one, just one more question. Because I've seen them in the county, but not necessarily in the city. Do we have any bud and breakfasts in the city? Where people can have overnight accommodations and access to cannabis? Not yet. Okay.
Not yet, but there are some folks that have aspirations.
And that's allowed in our permitting structure?
You know, yeah, I think we can squint at the, the code and see a way to make that happen. But no, you know, I think Eureka really, people enjoy the, you know, inventory of kind of older retail or older light industrial or those types of facilities that are sitting around. And they can really get in there and do, you know, two or three or four different things to maybe accompany a farm they might have out in the hill. Or, you know, lately I've been encouraging, you know, someone with a facility to go up on, on their hillside with, with their neighbors and, you know, rally the troops and get everyone to come join together. Because, you know, that's, that's a way that they can definitely bolster their chances.
Thank you.
Sure.
Riley, thanks for the presentation. Can you confirm, I didn't hear in your presentation any info about how many facilities featuring onsite consumption? Like I can think of at least three within city limits. Do you know any offhand? How many with smoking or consumption areas?
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. I think I'm thinking three of them. And usually every time one of them is about to open or is opening, I, I remind them that, you know, they can go through the steps and be one of those with a consumption lounge. And people get interested and talk about, yeah, you know, we'll see how it goes. So, but yeah, for the time being, there's three.
And have you noticed for the ones that have been in operation, have there been any issues with like conflicts with neighboring land uses or police complaint, you know, you know, issues with crime or, you know, security or whatever?
For the onsite, one of the ones with consumption?
Correct, yeah.
No, no, I haven't. Nope, nope. And, you know, that's kind of the spiel we give them when we get out there is, you know, you can, you can do it. You're approved. But we have kind of a complaint-driven process. So if, if your neighbors complain, we got to come out and check you out. So I've been waiting for that to happen, but no, it hasn't happened yet.
That's good to hear. What about like other complaints for like distribution facilities or processing or manufacturing? Have we had any issues with odor in recent years? I know we have had it in the past, but has that kind of resolved itself or what would you say about that?
Yeah, yeah. There's been a couple of places that had like, you know, broken windows. And we have a great code enforcement team that gets right on that. But no, 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 no real complaints about odor. I mean, I know sometimes when I'm walking around Old Town or in town, I can get a strong lift. But, you know, it doesn't mean that people are complaining. I don't know if there's just a level of acceptance or, or it might be coming from something else. But I haven't received any real complaints about odor.
And with the, with Halverson Park, that's in the coastal zone. So we had our, our amendments certified by the coastal commission. Is that right?
We sure did. Yeah, yeah. And that's not an easy thing to do sometimes.
Yeah, so props for that. Okay, cool. And, and did you, did you hear of any like logistical challenges as far as, you know, having done permitting of events in the county? You know, there's different ways of attacking the, getting the, the cannabis retail component embedded within the, the event premise. You know, there's sort of the pop-up dispensary model where. model where you've got a, a distribution area, and then you've got your retail point-of-sale area, and then I've also seen kind of like, sort of a roach-coach method where it's just sort of like a self-contained thing where you've got everything all on, online. How did that work during the, the Canafest? I wasn't able to attend.
Yeah, the, uh, the folks, uh, the event organizers were adamant, they wanted to have it be kind of the whole event basically was a cannabis event, whereas, and just to let people know that the term cannabis event is the boundary of the area where you can sell and consume cannabis, so sometimes in California, there'll be an event, and then they'll have an area you can go into that's separate, and that's the cannabis event, but these folks, uh, really wanted it to be the whole event, uh, to be the cannabis event, so we actually made the Adorni Center had its own kind of secure passageway, and we used the Adorni Center as kind of the vault and the, uh, distribution area, so folks selling out of their booths, you know, when they would run out of their, uh, whatever, their supplies, they would just go back into the Adorni Center to their secure vault, and, um, the state was onsite with about ten people there, and they were just really, they were really happy, and they were, uh, you know, walking around, uh, not necessarily enjoying themselves, but they looked like they were having fun, and, um, they just gave us nothing but good, good, um, feedback, and that was really our saving grace, because it's our first event, so I leaned heavily on the state, and we had plenty of, uh, pre-planning meetings, and I think that's really why everything went smooth. So, I think, yeah, just having the state, you know, they're, they're right across the street from us here, so I, I've made good relations over there, and anything that I feel, uh, not confident about, I just reach out to them, and chances are they have a good, uh, example of a, a successful solution to lean on.
Cool, yeah, that's a clever use of the Adorni Center. I think that's a great way to handle having a secure location for distro. Well, thanks for the report. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Riley. I want to thank all the staff tonight because there was a staff event tonight that they're all missing to be here, so I really appreciate all of them. Thank you.
Sorry. That was poor planning from the planning department.
Um, yeah, we'll try not to hold you up then. I do want to then just close out staff report and communication. We'll move on to other reports in communication, and, um, I guess Attorney Block maybe just wants to help keep us out of some legal zones, but maybe just for, um, to start, can you just explain the noticing process and, um, what is required by the city and versus the state?
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, there are state provisions that guide our provisions. Um, in the coastal zone, there's provisions in the Coastal Commission's regulations also in addition to the planning and, well, public noticing provisions that apply citywide. And then, so we've adopted recently, I'm guessing, I'm thinking it was 2017, we, we updated the noticing provisions of the coastal code, um, and we updated them in the inland code when we did the comprehensive update in 2019, so they're up to date and consistent with state law, and, um, the, uh, it requires for public hearing notices, uh, to notice within three hundred feet of the property boundaries, um, ten, a minimum of ten days. Is it a maximum of thirty days too? I feel like there's a provision like that, uh, and, uh, um, Raylene Gannon here is, uh, the most reliable person I've ever worked with, and she's in charge of our noticing, and so it always, um, yeah, I mean, we're all human, but she's pretty, pretty superhuman. And then the posting notice on the site, I think is an added provision of our code that isn't necessarily required by state law, um, and then certain things also require newspaper notice or newspaper notice, um, in lieu of the three hundreds. Like, when we do, um, zoning code updates, it applies citywide, we send out a newspaper, we do a newspaper notice instead of mailers.
And for the noticing on the parcels, is there, you're saying the city's added that, that's not required by the state, and is there noticing, um, requirements as far as where you put that notice?
No, our, um, Kate, Cass, Senior Planner Castellano, do you have our code up? Can you read the section? Do you have it with you?
I don't have it.
We could certainly come back to some of this. I know it was kind of sprung on you guys, but it has just come up a few times in these... Uh, it was referred to in the letter.
Yeah, um, yep, I, maybe this is what our code exactly says, I don't know, um, but it, here it says a public hearing notice sign must be posted on the project site.
Okay, and so say I can't see, I don't know how, and this might seem really stupid, but I don't know how you, you go through your mail, right? If you don't have, if you don't have vision, so I, there was like a reference in, um, one of the letters today, it was like, how are they going to see that? How will they get notice? Is there a provision as far as what is required, say, like, with some kind of ADA statute?
Yeah, I think the noticing requirements also require us to post the notice on the website, and that's something else we do. But, yeah, in terms of the postcard being ADA compliant, um, we could do a better job of that.
I don't, yeah.
I've never seen that in a place I've worked.
And I would assume the city's website then is ADA compliant in the way that it can be read back, it can be audible, okay?
But is the, the mailing out to people who own the properties and tenants, occupants?
In the coastal zone.
But not inland?
But not inland, it's just property owners, because the tenant requirement is in the Coastal Commission's regulations.
Yeah, that seems like...
It's a nightmare in certain areas of the city to mail to, um, tenants, because, Raylene, can you explain it?
Yeah, many tenants don't have an address at the property. If, when we mail to tenants or when we do something that's going to mail to tenants, I get fifty percent of them or more back, so we're spending a lot of postage for undeliverable mail. So, and the new program we have doesn't, it could send it to a tenant if we programmed it to or made it, um, but we just get so much mail back and the expense of doing it. I do also post the notices, uh, on a bulletin board at Eureka Naturals outside, so there's one posted outside here at City Hall, one posted at Eureka's Naturals, the signs are put up, it's put on the city's website.
Also, anybody can ask to be on the list of people we send, uh, notice to? Not, not mailed notice, but we...
I also have a list. If, if you send me an email and ask, I want to know everything about every vacation rental, I'm going to add you every time I send one to it. We also have a list that will send people the agenda packets.
So we send waterkeeper all of our CDP notices. They have requested that, for instance.
And I certainly sympathize with, you know, getting stuff kicked back. We have the same problem in the county, it just, it is one of those things where it's a burden, but it is important in my mind that we engage with both, you know, populations.
And we do send to tenants on certain projects, so there are certain things that we know
We want to be as transparent as possible, so, you know, if I know there's a mobile home park next to an inland project, I will request that we mail to them, to the residents.
I have a project in the county right now on appeal that we didn't mail to the mobile home park because we didn't have addresses for the tenants in the mobile home park, and...
That must have, I think they all came back to us.
That's the last one I got, that they all came back.
So I'm not unsympathetic, I'm just saying, it is one of those things where, you know, because if you send it to, like, the known address for the house that's on the property and you just say occupant, that seems like you're going to have success if the address is good, but as far as, like, where someone subdivided a Victorian up into seven units, that's going to be harder, you know, to capture, for sure.
In the case of our mobile home park, each mobile home had its own physical address, so we had the numbers, but they named theirs by the streets and stuff, so they all came back. But I do keep all of those, so when they come back, I keep them and scan them eventually, I've got a big pile. I keep the list that I get from Parcel Quest of who we mail to, I keep the map of who we mail to, and I keep a copy of the postcards of who we mail to, so I can verify that all the ones that were mentioned in this were mailed.
And I noticed, sorry, I keep harping here, but I noticed when I looked at, I use our GIS and I, um, so the parcels in blue were some of the people that said they didn't get notice on that project, and I noticed all of them were outside of city limits, and that's just kind of the nature of the, the parcel boundary was the city, but I, that was a question I had, do we not, I'm not saying we don't, but do we notice anyone regardless of what jurisdiction you're in?
Parcel Quest will pull up everyone within three hundred feet of the parcel boundaries, so yes, I, they, all four of those are on my list.
Because I think we shared data between the county GIS and the city, or if we don't, we easily could, where we have merged the parcel layer with the...
We get the assessor's data from the county every month.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sir.
Senior Planner Castellano has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I did pull up our coastal zoning code, uh, noticing procedures, and it does require the notice be meant, and as Kristen said, it's consistent with state law. It requires us to mail it, um, at least ten days prior to the hearing, uh, mail it to the owner of the property, the agent, all property owners and residents within three hundred feet, the Coastal Commission, any person who requested, who filed a written request for these, um, notices, as Raylene talked about, um, as well as it said, um, the notice shall be posted on the site in a conspicuous place or near the property affected, but failure to post the notice shall not invalidate the proceedings, and I do remember reading that in state law as well.
Thank you.
And then we also may provide additional notice, um, in any other manner deemed necessary. So, I just wanted to clarify.
Great, thank you.
I want to say, I, you want to be as transparent as possible, and in the future, I've read a couple of...
I am not live, sorry, that was untransparent. Staff wants to be as transparent as possible, and in the future, I'm planning on doing hybrid director hearings, um...
So hybrid, you mean you have face-to-face and, and Zoom like we have tonight?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's a great solution. I was, I was just wondering, up until now, how, when, when you, what are the, what standard do you use to determine whether you're going to be Zoom-only or face-to-face and, and Zoom? How do you make that decision?
Well, for the, pursuant to the Brown Act, um, if you're a group of people meeting, it's got to be in-person now, um, and, uh, we had been meeting, uh, during COVID for director hearings with just Zoom, previous to that, they did it in two oh seven in that tiny room, and no, nobody typically came, um, and so we asked the city clerk, and we, we occurred, we confirmed with the city clerk and the city attorney it was okay to just do it via Zoom, but going forward, I plan on doing it both ways.
Yeah, that will mitigate the, the folks who have technical capacity or don't have technical capacity. That seems wise, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions about that? All right. Uh, we will move to adjournment. Thank you, guys.